Morning, everyone, and welcome to our June client town hall meeting here at Ascendus regarding NDC. We have lots of updates for you today and some operational updates that we're going to talk about as well. First off, my name is Joe Curtis. I'm the Senior Vice President here at Ascendus. With me today, I have our usual cast of characters that comes with and leads the presentation. So first is our President Brent Blake. I have our Vice President at Corporate Travel Terry Barton. I have our Vice President at Travel Technology Ken Augustine. Ken will be leading most of the presentation today. We also have our Director of Program Management Corey Ring. And our Director of Optimization Katie Lacks. As always, Katie will be handling any questions or anything that you have. So please submit those in and we'll make sure to work through that through the chat area to monitor them. And then we'll address them at the end or as the presentation is is going on. First, I'll start with our President Brent Blake. And Brent, just so everybody knows, you didn't lose your job. You're just packing up behind you and I see the boxes behind you. So I'll let everybody know Ascendus is moving as of July 5th. We'll be in a new office location not too far from where we are today. Roughly about a mile, mile and a half away down Shawnee Mission Parkway and Metcalf is where we're going to be located. So I look forward to having y'all there. Construction's just finalizing now, so we're going to be busy in the next week or so moving. So yeah, just look to have everybody there and see the new conference rooms and our new location. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Brent.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Kind of here's our agenda real quick. We're going to do some corporate updates and trends. Certainly talk about American Airlines and NDC. And Ken's going to recap the functionality and then the timeline as a reminder of what's going on with NDC. So I'm going to jump in and just give you some Ascendus overall updates, just to give you a feel for what's going on. Our legacy business, which is in some industries, you call it same store sales, but it's our legacy business versus 2019 has come back and pretty much plateaued at about 75%. So we have some clients that are above 2019 numbers. We have some clients that are at 50%, 30%. It really kind of is across the spectrum. And most of the time it's based on the client's business model. Maybe they've changed, maybe they've gone to a regional concept. But overall, just we feel like it's now normalized at about 75%. So as a result, from a staffing perspective, I think everybody knows that we had a challenge, certainly towards last year of staffing, but we are now completely staffed in our corporate travel center. And so that's good news for everybody and certainly for us to make sure our service levels are up where they need to be. And then the last thing I want to just kind of give an update on is we're really seeing a couple of trends. And the first is what we're calling rogue travel. And basically what rogue travel is, is we're noticing travelers are they're traveling, but they're not necessarily booking through us or they're not completely adhering to the company policy. So we can't really tell whether this is just a halo effect from the pandemic, where everybody kind of learned to do it on their own, or if it's a reaction to corporations, maybe not focusing on travel over the last couple of years. But we are seeing a trend where we're getting phone calls from travelers. And then we're saying, well, wait a minute, you didn't book it through us. So it's difficult for us to help you. So we just thought we'd throw that out for your thoughts and consideration. And as a result, you would you would expect the hotel attachment is now lower than it was pre pandemic. And by hotel attachment, what we mean is when we drive an airline ticket for somebody and there's an overnight stay, be it one, two, or three nights, we would expect to have a hotel booking with that airline ticket. And pre pandemic, that was around 70, 72% attachment rate. Now we're looking at numbers that are in the high 50%, low 60%. So again, just another trend that we're noticing that travelers are not booking hotels through us, even though they're booking an airline ticket. So again, just kind of a word to the wise for those of you that are managing your program. We are seeing some some breakage there. And then the last thing I'll just throw out, not to scare anybody, but I will tell you that we've had increased fraud attempts from hackers as it relates to travel companies. And it's pretty consistent across the travel industry. We've chatted with other friends of ours that are in the travel management business. And for some reason, travel's kind of been targeted. But we're seeing an increased attempt of fraud. And the main scam that they're doing is they are calling us or after hours and basically saying, hey, I want to book a trip. I'm a travel arranger. I want to book it for another person. And so they'll make several attempts on trying to do that, be it, you know, access somebody's profile or obviously get somebody to give a credit card number or something like that. And we're also seeing the same thing with rental cars is that they're trying to book rental cars for any company that has a central billing account. So I just wanted to throw that out to let you know, we believe it's collaborative effort between us and our clients. Terry's done a great job on training all of our team on fraudulent practices. And they've gone through recent training on on being aware. So we'll just throw it out to everybody and say, hey, just be aware that the travel industry is being targeted for fraud attempts. And so we've got our radar up. So if we kind of push back to any of your travelers about, okay, we need a little bit more information for security purposes. That's where it's coming from. All right, so we have some additional updates, so I'm going to turn those over to Terry.
Great, thanks, Brent, and good morning, everyone. I'm just gonna, I've got one quick slide that I wanted to talk to you guys about today. And it really is a new product that we've launched officially last week. However, we did a soft launch a couple of months ago. We've launched a new survey tool that is specific to our agent booked reservations. So if a traveler calls in and books with an agent, they're going to receive an email once per quarter asking them to just answer two simple questions on their experience with us. The first question was, how was your experience with? And it will save the specific agent that you worked with and the day that you worked with them. And you can rate them one to 10. I'm happy to say that since this has started, our agent experience is coming in at a rating of 99 out of 100. So that tells us our agents are doing a really good job. The second question that we're asking is an NPS score. So it's how likely would you recommend to send us to either a friend or business colleague? Again, this is out of 100 and we're coming in at 85. NPS standard across all industries, anything with a 70 or above is considered outstanding. So we're very excited to see these scores coming in and get such high ratings. What we're doing with our survey tool is we are taking the information. Oh, I guess there's one additional comment section in the survey. So anybody that brings a comment to us, we are taking that very seriously. So one thing that we're doing is we're sharing all the positive comments that we get with our agents. So they can see who, you know, who gave them the positive comments. If we get anything that's a negative or anything that we need to action, that goes to our CSR. So our CSR is Marla Holcutt. She will be reaching out to the traveler to, you know, just see what the comment was and how we can help. I'll say one of the things that we did take off of the comments that first came in is our our messaging on our hold time right now, we put in place last year. And it talks about extended hold times due to, you know, delays in the being able to get through the airlines or whatever. So we are going to be changing that back to our standard messaging again, still keeping triage in place. So thank you for whoever submitted that one. We took that serious and we're going to go back to to where we were. The other piece that I just wanted to touch on really quick is I just want to keep you guys up with mission control and what they're doing. So I know we're heading into the summer and we think that warmer weather means there are not as many weather delays that are happening, but there are. So just keep in mind that across the south region today and last week even, that there's massive storms hitting Atlanta, South Florida, Charlotte. So we're looking at any cancellations on those. We did get our notice for our first hurricane hitting this weekend of the week. So Hurricane Brett, we are monitoring, looking at all the travelers that may be affected and reaching out to see if they need to change flights or anything like that. And then lastly, all of the labor actions or industrial actions that are happening in Europe. There's been a lot of cancellations, airports just shutting down. And again, we are running reports daily as soon as we get any type of information about those actions happening and running reports and reaching out to travelers if we can help them. So that's it for updates on corporate. Ken, I think I'm turning it over to you next.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Terry. So I moved the slide over, but even before I start, I wanted to ask everybody on the phone a question. So I'm leaving something in chat just for something different to do today. So what I'm asking is, are you travelers asking you, are they reaching out to you about finding pricing differences when they're looking for their flights? So we want to know if this is something true for you. You might not want to reply directly. So what we're asking is you can just hover over that question in the chat window and choose the thumbs up emoji. If it's not true, you don't have to respond. And of course, we still want people to respond with context if you want to or to ask any other questions in the chat window. That hasn't changed. So we definitely kind of want to get this as a pulse of what's going on. And we'll talk about those when we kind of finish up. As for the slide that we're on, this was actually our summary that we had from May. So six weeks ago, we showed this and we said that we wanted to first take a wait from the C approach. And then we said, you know, opting into American's NDC content isn't something that we're really recommending because there was just a lot of gaps for us in our ability to be able to service travel that was booked through that and those sorts of things. So it's six weeks later and honestly, we still feel the same way. So the gaps really exist and the corporate travel industry is taking some time to kind of move in the right direction to meet all the requirements that you have. And we'll continue to cover those as we go through this and answer any questions that you have around it. All the other pieces of this, we still we still feel pretty strongly about this. So airlines are still going to jump into the NDC boat, just as American has. We're going to see a lot of that. It's still, we still think the timeline is right, that it's going to take 12 to 18 months. It's going to be bumpy for a time before we're able to service it as we were, as we're all used to over the past 10 years or whatever for our corporate clients and all their requirements. So I think the other piece of this is that you all seem to agree. So we haven't had anybody of our clients that are requesting to opt in. As I mentioned, six weeks ago, we're working very, very closely with our parent company, BCD, and all the testing that they've done to date on this, they've only had one client look to opt in. So that's something that is, if you want to take not opting in as a response, I think it's a strong response from the market that they're not ready to really take that on just yet. We have seen news for some some other airlines. So as far as our GDS that we use to book, United, Air Canada, and Aero Mexico are all integrating with that GDS with Sabre. And they're all at various stages. They're all integrating in their their NDC launch. So Air Canada had stated, we reported this last time, that they had stated that they were doing a distribution fee for the legacy channel for any bookings than that. They were going to do that in June. And now they're launching, making NDC available to agents in the coming months. Aero Mexico is launching, but it's really just within their own market. And then I kind of skipped, but United is live. But I think it's really important to point out that there's significant differences in the way that they're approaching it as opposed to American Airlines. And so we might remember that, you know, American came out and they stated that they were focusing much more on the leisure market. And they were really de-emphasizing corporate relationships. And that was, they stated that really even before the launch was live with NDC. And they've then then used the NDC channel to really try and accelerate that strategy. And then as we've talked about, I mean, they've restricted up to 40% of the fares from legacy GDS content or legacy the edifac channel. United has not done that. When we talked to them, they stated to us very directly and very firmly that they are committed to having all fares available in both channels. And I think we agree. I mean, that's certainly the approach that we think makes the most sense. There is, of course, I mean, I should probably point out, there's there's news in other markets of other airlines. So this is happening a little bit everywhere. But we just felt like these were the most important ones that we really needed to talk about with regard to our region. All right, so before I move on, I'm going to throw one more question out there. And thank you for answering the the last one. So for this one, I'm going to put in chat. Are you allowing your travelers to book directly on websites and outside of the travel program? Especially if you said yes to the first question, are you, you know, allowing then for them to go ahead and then book that at that a website that's not necessarily within Ascendus or within the program that you're structuring? Same rules apply. You can give it a thumbs up if you agree with that. Or you can also reply with more context or anything else that you might want to have for feedback. And again, we'll talk about this more as we go through this later. Okay, so here's a slide that I presented the last time that we were together, outlining where we thought there were growing pains within America's Americans rollout of new distribution channels. And we definitely mean that they're growing pains. So the biggest issues in my mind were that the legacy unused tech unused ticket credits and how they couldn't be used for NDC bookings. That was one really big item. And the fact that when we do have these exchanges, they were really going to be heavily, a heavily manual effort for us. Pre-trip approval processes weren't going to work. There was no after hour service for these orders. And that, again, overall servicing could be very manual and sometimes requiring phone calls directly to American, creating a really poor experience for travelers that are calling us. And on top of that, you have this area that's that's kind of inside of this box that are shortcomings that are really American Airlines decisions, right? So there's no ability to use pricing insurance tools, difficulty doing comparison shopping, no name changes, and really a very large lack of visibility for us. So when travelers call in, that makes it very challenging for us to help us and to help those travelers. Well, what we're finding that at least there's some movement here. It's small, but in this area, their American Airlines is listening. So they're working to address the unused ticket situation. And how they're doing that is they're working with a company called, and I'm going to murder this name, so I apologize. I think it's called Exelia. They have created an ability to use the edifac unused tickets. So all the unused tickets that you had prior to April to apply those to new NDC orders. And we think this is a really good sign because it's bringing us back closer to the normal operations that you expect. And I actually probably don't need normal for us, but because it's brand new and different, there'll be training. There'll be things that we have to learn, but at least it'll be normal to be within the the travel program standards that you all have. However, I have to say, it's really important to know that this is very new and this isn't something that's really stated very often in the media. But this was announced two weeks ago in the press. And what we have on screen is pretty close to all the information that we have. So we're working with our parent company, BCD, as they are putting resources into uncovering what this will all mean. But it's going to probably roll out a little slowly relative to the kind of marketing splash that it might have. Our agents order tickets within Sabre, as we talked about. And we don't know yet when Exelia, that when that solution is going to be available within Sabre and what caveats there might be getting it or what fees might apply. And to be clear, I really do expect there's probably going to be some fees that will apply to a solution like this. Still, we really like that it brings us closer to what your travel program will need. So we're pretty happy about that. Okay, so the big question that was posed to me is great. What does our roadmap then look like to being able to service NDC orders, whether they're from American or anybody else? And of course, we're starting with American because that's the one that we know that was the first one to launch. And before I ask, before I before I go to that slide, I have one final question. So for anybody who, and I haven't been paying attention because I've been trying to present the slides. But if there is anybody who answered yes to the first two questions, the last question that I have in chat is, are there any airlines beyond American that are being booked outside of your travel program that you're allowing on those external sites, that you're doing all of those those things? Of course, if you're giving thumbs up to all these questions, we'd still love responses for what airlines they might be. If there, if nobody answers, yes, that's great. So we're happy for that as well. So feel free to add any context or continue to ask any questions you might have. Okay, so this is kind of what a timeline looks for us and what a roadmap looks for us. So when we started thinking about looking at our legacy edifac channel and then the new NDC channel, and then also in the last town hall, we talked about how there was some flooding of the water, American was presenting a lot of last minute deals on aa.com as web only fares. So we added that to this list as well, so that we can kind of see the shortcomings across all and what a timeline was to fix some of these. And in the case of that last point, they weren't really NDC fares. They were just available as a last minute deal on American.com, on aa.com rather. So on the legacy column, this should be pretty, you know, simple to you. It's the the list that we already know. It's based on travel program requirements that we've all worked with for a long time. And we kind of talked about how there's some growing pains for NDC and particularly with American and NDC, and it does show here. So we won't be able to do multi-city orders for NDC or multi-passenger orders for NDC for a time yet. That's just is not something that was part of their implementation within Sabre to this time. However, our agents will be able to do bookings pretty shortly. So we're doing some training for them on NDC in the month of July. And we'll also be able to support bookings in Concur in July as well. But those would be through a travel fusion connection and those are instant purchase. So it's through a third party aggregator and we have to keep that all in mind. There are some workarounds, some caveats that we need to think about when we start going down that avenue. Concur will be ready by that time. Dean will be ready shortly after that in July. Needing the same experience that you have in today in the the booking tool. The booking tool will take a little longer. So what I mean by that is for you to have the experience you have today and have it be an NDC booking in Concur, that needs to be built out with a Sabre connection by Concur. And currently, I believe that's going to be in 2024 and probably not by early first quarter, right? That's it's going to take some time to do that. Dean is in the same boat. They have not started that building yet, that to my knowledge. But once that happens, that's going to allow for the type of booking experience, self-service changes that are available today will be available then. Some of those things will start to iron out. And, you know, as on our last couple of slides, I'm really encouraged by some of the news that that we have of Exelia and trying to make sure that we can start to do exchanges. I think that could have us see some positive movement by the end of the year. And I think duty of care will also be there by the end of the year as well. After that, there's kind of some question marks still about how existing travel policies are really going to work within an NDC environment for American and possibly for other airlines as well. Reporting fits into that as well. It's going to be, there's going to be question marks around that specifically around reporting for where's the lowest price and all those sorts of things. NDC is built to give a unique offer every single time that you ask for one. So that that does make it difficult to to think about it in a lowest price consistency sort of way. And then we've already talked about pricing insurance, pre-trip approval processes. And then on the last column, you see for web only fares, that's they're the only ones that can do last minute deals as the, because that's very American specific content. That's not really a new thing, but, you know, as we know that there's, we've seen some of that for some time. I think it's, we're seeing it a little bit more or maybe we're we're noticing it more because we're looking at differences between NDC pricing and our legacy pricing. So we won't get those in the GDS or any through either of the channels, through edifac or through NDC. And after that, it has the same servicing challenges that we've been talking about, and those are not going to change. So if we're booking on web only fares, the only thing we can really do is try to call the airline on behalf of the traveler. But we're not given any visibility really to a lot of statuses and a lot of things. And if the airline takes control of that flight, then it's very hard for us to service it ourselves. And as you move down the column, it really moves further and further away from typical travel programs and travel program guidance that we usually use. So if we have a lowest fare, that's a large confirm, a large concern. And that's why we're maybe allowing some of those lowest fares to be booked on web only. Then it is challenging because there's no reporting. There's no way to guarantee that you're getting the lowest fare because it's now outside of control of the purchasing process. So that's where that stands so far. I think that we'll continue to update this as we go along. And obviously, we're starting to look at other airlines too, United in particular, and where that might be. But it's early in that process for us on that. All right, so that is the update as for now. I think before I throw back for any questions that come out, I guess Katie, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it to you since I've been presenting and asked how we answered some of those questions and what's kind of come out of that.
Yeah, thanks, Ken. So looking at the answers, the first question was, are you allowing trap? Or I'm sorry, are travelers asking you about finding price differences when they are booking flights? 20% out of all of our attendees said yes. So I would say that's pretty good, you know? That's, that's a good response. So the next question, do you allow your travelers to book directly on websites and outside of the program? 23% of those that answered said yes. 46% said no, and 30% was more in the discouraged bucket, if you will. And then as far as the last question about airlines, you know, most was around your frontier, Allegiant, Breeze, which I think is pretty common. And then there is one that said United. So that was just one of the responses for United, so. You're muted, Ken.
Yeah, I guess I would say I just wanted to thank everybody for being open to answering those questions and all those sorts. It really does help us as we're going through this to get a good idea of where you're at and this whole process for NDC as well.
Can I ask a question? And I'm going to put it in the chat and if you could respond while we move on to the next discussion too. Are you, those that are on the call, are you surprised to hear about the hotel attachment rate percentage dropping? Have you seen that within your organization? Does it surprise you? You know, do you have policy around hotels with booking? I mean, any feedback you have around hotels and the attachment discussion that Brent was talking about would be great feedback for us as well.
And I'll just jump in there a little bit, Katie. We have recently hired a hotel sourcing specialist by the name of Drew Eberhart. And Drew's main focus is to put an emphasis on the hotel portion of it and work with our clients, analyze kind of their activities and then make recommendations on what we can kind of do about. So you're going to be hearing from your program manager about our hotel sourcing specialists and perhaps how we can assist going forward, particularly as September rolls around and we have hotel RIP season, which is quite stressful on everybody. So just wanted to welcome Drew to the team and look for his smiling face and emails coming forward because you're going to start hearing from him via your program manager. And then Ken, the other thing I'd want to kind of just made emphasize, and you can jump in here as well. And that is the big issue we're seeing is when we say edifac, we mean Sabre, the reservation system that that we use. I think one of the the biggest issues, and I want to just again clarify this, is American is basically saying, we're not going to use Sabre or edifac to provide a lot of these new content and fares. And that puts an issue with us because it creates several downline problems, meaning we can't capture accounting information, we can't do unused tickets, we can't do aftercare service. There's just so many things that that, it's kind of like the railroad that that everything runs on for the airline and the TMC industry. You'll see, and as we're beginning to see is United, Delta, all the other, I'd say, big carriers. They're trying to find a solution while they're trying to put in new content like United uses their continuous pricing. And we think that's great, but at least they're trying to do it through the railroad, through the GDS system so that we can continue to provide travel services after so that we can continue to provide uh travel services, aftercare for our customers. So that's really the big difference that we see between American and some of the other carriers. And I just wanted to make sure that sometimes we get involved in our jargon and our acronyms and all that kind of stuff. But to really clarify, that's really kind of our stance and our point. And that's why we have the strategies that we do.
Yeah, thanks, Brent. That's perfect.
Katie, have we had any other ones come through?
Yeah, there's a lot of feedback on the hotels. So I really appreciate you all putting that in there. So conference attendees, conference rates, yep, that, that is a big one. Obviously that has to be done through the housing bureau, the conference rate that's set up. There's some on um difficulty finding rates and room types, but I believe that is something that we can address with training opportunities, local negotiated rates and, you know, putting preferred hotels at the top of the list. So I do believe that there's solutions to those. Uh, some feedback on Concur is difficult, much easier to use through IHG Marriott apps. Again, I would love more feedback on that. I think that's something that we can take on a case by case and just kind of work through, see what um the specifics are there. And um, one, thank you, uh, just that departments are asking to get into Ascendus to get better pricing because they're finding the rates are lower than them booking on their own. I think that is due to the local negotiated rates, the BCD rates that are set up and bookable on the online booking tools. And some hotels are not required to book per policy, but encouraged. So if there's anything we can do with kind of changing that perception in a travel policy, please talk to your travel uh program manager. We would love that opportunity. And yeah, I think that's, that's the most of it. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Ken, thank you for the presentation. It was very good. A lot of information there. I think, you know, like you said, it's so fluid as we move through NBC and continue to move on and try to get the travel technology in our industry to match what's out there. It's going to take a little bit of time, but uh we certainly have made a lot of progress, I think, as TMCs in the last thirty days. And I think we'll make a lot more here coming, coming through the fall. So looking forward to it. Um, with that, I know a lot of people have vacations and stuff this summer and June and, or the rest of June, July and August. We have GBTA in Dallas in August for those of you that are attending. So we'll find out that or just let it, let your program manager know if you're going to attend. Uh, we're going to have one of our client dinners there and an event and everything else that we'll, we'll have going there at, in Dallas. So please let us know. We look forward to that and having that. So our next meeting, because of all of that going on, will be in September. That will do our town hall and hopefully we have tons of updates from GBTA. We'll have updates uh again on NBC where we're at. We'll have operational updates and anything that's, that's going on there. So uh, please reach out to your PM or to myself or Brent or Terry, Cory, whoever, just let us know. And uh, we look forward to that. So I'll turn it over to you, Brent.
Yeah, I just uh wanted to say thank you again for attending. Thank you for your business. Uh, thank you for your feedback. Uh, the relationship that we have with you all is really the key for us. That's what we want to excel at. We want to be the best at creating long lasting relationships. So we appreciate your involvement and certainly um your business. And I just wanted to wish everybody have a great summer.
Sounds great. Like I said in the beginning, the next time you see us, we will be in a different office. So uh, you'll see different backgrounds to all of us. So looking forward to it. Thank you.